Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting. I'd like to now call the meeting to order and remind us that our mission statement is to provide an excellent and equitable education in a safe, supportive environment so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. One other reminder is that school board regular meetings now begin at 6:00 PM and we ask that you check out the school board's website for a full listing of available viewing and listening options. And to start us off, we'll ask our choir to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please stand.
Thank you. We have here our two Crawford Elementary choirs. We are lucky enough at Crawford to have a 3rd and 4th grade and a 5th and 6th grade choir with our numbers totaling over 100. You see a small select group here to sing the National Anthem for us today. And my name is Nicole Lawrence. I'm the music teacher at both Crawford and Anderson Elementary. Now the kids are going to introduce themselves.
Evelyn Dalton, 6th grade.
I'm Bailey Flaherty, 6th grade.
Harper Johnson, 6th grade.
Cambridge White, 6th grade.
Maddie Daniels, 6th grade.
Josie Daniels, 6th grade.
Leila Hauck, 3rd grade.
Intrazino, 5th grade.
Caitlin Devon, 3rd grade.
Charlie Daniels, 3rd grade.
Isabel Tapley, 3rd grade.
Ava Flaherty, 3rd grade.
Adley Hughes, 4th grade.
Haley Fenner, 4th grade.
Brennan Trazino, 3rd grade.
Fallon Buckner, 3rd grade.
Michaela Ross, 4th grade.
Ethan Olenius, 3rd grade.
Gavin Olenius, 3rd grade.
Bren Stolen, 3rd grade.
Okay, can we have another round of applause? Crawford Singers and Caribou Chorus. And really appreciate the parents for bringing their children this evening to help start off our meeting tonight. I appreciate that. Ms. Tuttle, if you could call a roll, please.
Mr. Jerome.
Here.
Colonel Bondurant.
Here.
Colonel Fisher.
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson.
Here.
Mr. Rice is excused. Mrs. Lambert.
Here.
Ms. McConnell is excused. Ms. Maradi.
Here.
Mrs. Dominique is excused. Mr. Doran.
Here.
The board has a quorum.
And next on our agenda is the ESP of the Month. This is the core value for high expectations. Maintain high expectations and educational opportunities to inspire high achievement. Pamela Gumm, Anderson Elementary School Behavior Aid, will be recognized as the ESP of the Month for February 2019. Stacy Stansel, Anderson Elementary School Principal, will make the presentation.
Thank you for taking the time to recognize Ms. Pamela Gumm, Anderson Elementary's Extra Special Person this month. This is her ninth year in the district and she is currently in the role of our Behavior Interventionist. I was first introduced to Mrs. Gumm on one of my initial spring site visits after being hired at Anderson's, as Anderson's principal four years ago. Former principal Sherri Merrick told me then how incredible Mrs. Gumm was and how she would be an invaluable asset to my new position. I knew right away that Sherri was correct in her assessment. Unfortunately for my sake, Mrs. Gumm decided to take a position with our district's ABLE program that year. I didn't realize until her return the following spring what an integral part to Anderson she was and continues to be. Her knowledge goes beyond her title. Her time with ABLE was a blessing in disguise for Anderson as it's provided her training and skills to support the most challenging of student situations and provide feedback, strategies, and suggestions to staff. Thank you, Pat Turner. I'd never leave the building without the confidence and ease of mind that Mrs. Gumm will handle any need that may arise with students, always communicating effectively with parents as well. I've utilized Mrs. Gumm's expertise in providing classroom student supports, modeling student management strategies for teachers, facilitating training for staff, whether focusing on the CHAMP's model or behavior intervention strategies for our paraprofessionals. Mrs. Gumm loves clear and consistent procedures and she loves data, all of which helps our school run like a well-oiled machine. She readily assists with collecting behavior intervention data through our Rethink Program along with facilitating functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention plans. She always plays a role on our school crisis team each year as well as each summer volunteering her time on interviewing and hiring teams with me. She never says no to an extra duty I may ask of her and never shies away from anything that will support our school. One of the qualities I value most in Mrs. Gumm is that she is an eager learner. She takes advantage of trainings and educational opportunities throughout each and every year. Currently, she is a full-time student at UAF pursuing a bachelor's degree. We're lucky she didn't have class tonight, so she could be here. She is also married to a former military member, David, and a mother of three high school students who attend Ben Islen High School. In closing, if I could choose one word to describe Mrs. Gumm is that she is a supporter. She's a supporter of her family, she's a supporter of our students and their families, supporter of our staff, supporter of our district's success, and most of all supporter of her own learning and commitment to education. It is my hope that I continue to reap the benefits of the support of Mrs. Pamela Gumm at Anderson Elementary for as long as I'm principal. As an employee for this district, she is a hidden gem that has made my principal world so much more manageable and well-balanced. Thank you Pam for your support and commitment to Anderson Elementary.
I can't right now. I usually, I usually have a lot to say. Thank you. We're only as great as our team is, so. I work for lots of great teams.
If you would go down the aisles, you can get lots of handshakes.
(Laughter)
Awesome, right?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Next is the adoption of the Agenda. The core value being student-centered, that we center everything we do on the student and student learning. Consent Agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine items not requiring public discussion by the school board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. If the superintendent or a member of the public wishes to have an item removed from the consent agenda, the request must be made to a board member any time prior to the start of the meeting. The board member has the discretion to accept or deny the request and only a board member may remove an item from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will, shall be considered separately as the last item of new business. Asterisk items will then be adopted by one single motion.
Move to adopt the Agenda with consent items. Second?
And can we call the roll, please?
Colonel Bondurant.
Yes.
Colonel Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Jerome.
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Motion carried.
The presentation on Agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on an Agenda item, those are action items or reports. I'm sorry. Oh, that's right. Sorry. I'm still a newbie. If you'd please read the consent items.
The board has accepted the award in the amount of $84,597 for the Alaska 21st Century Community Learning Centers grant from the United States Department of Education through the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development per fiscal note 2019-11A. Accepted the award in the amount of $25,000 for the School Improvement Planning Grant from the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development per fiscal note 2019-26. Approved Anderson Elementary School's request to raise approximately $2,500 through a school Read-A-Thon from February 25th through March 8th, 2019 to purchase books and book repair supplies for the school's library. Approved Joy Elementary School's request to raise approximately $1,000 through the school's Spring Scholastic Book Fair to be held February 15th through the 22nd, 2019 to purchase books and supplies for the school's library and provide books for classroom collections. The board has approved Midnight Sun Elementary School's request to raise approximately $1,200 through the school's Spring Scholastic Book Fair to be held February 18th through the 22nd, 2019 to purchase books, supplies, and equipment for the school's library. Approved Tickets of Brown's Elementary School's request to raise approximately $2,000 through the school's Spring Scholastic Book Fair to be held February 11th through the 22nd, 2019 to purchase materials for an enhanced learning area in the school's library. They have approved Wood Rivers Elementary School's request to raise approximately $2,500 through a month-long Read-A-Thon from mid-February through mid-March, 2019 to purchase books and book repair supplies for the school's library. They've approved Lathrop High School's request to send eight JROTC cadets and two chaperones to Camp Perry, Ohio, February 12th through the 18th, 2019 where cadets will participate in the National Air Rifle Competition at no cost to the district and if Homeland Security issues travel warnings, students will not travel. They have approved North Pole High School's request to send one JROTC cadet, one instructor, and one chaperone to Camp Perry, Ohio, February 13th through the 18th, 2019 where the cadet will participate in the National Air Rifle Competition at no cost to the district and if Homeland Security issues travel warnings, students will not travel. The board has approved the request from the Alaska Native Education Program on behalf of the District-wide Native Youth Olympics Program to raise funds to send Native Youth Olympic Teams, approximately 60 students, four to five chaperones, seven coaches, and two administrators from North Pole Randy Smith Ryan and Tannenbaum Middle Schools, Effie Cochran Early College Charter School, Hutchison, Lathrop, West Valley, and North Pole High Schools to Anchorage, April 24th through the 28th, 2019 to participate in the Native Youth Olympics at no cost to the district and if Homeland Security issues travel warnings, students will not travel. The board has accepted the gift of $3,000 from the Aliaska Pipeline Company to the Alaska Native Education Program to be used to support the Summer Letza Blessica Bike Trip from Paxton to Cantwell. They've accepted the gift of $1,000 from Anween Elementary PTA to Anween Elementary School for the purchase of skis and poles for the school ski club. Accepted the prizes of one Samsung Notebook 7-Spin Laptop, one Samsung Galaxy S9 phone, and noise-canceling headphones valued at $1,819.97 from Samsung Electronics Electronics to North Pole Middle School as Alaska State winner of the Samsung Solve For Tomorrow Contest to be used by students and staff in the school's Extended Learning Program. The board has accepted the gift of $1,500 from the Islen Officer Spouses Club to Ben Islen Junior High School to support the school's wrestling program. Accepted the gift of $1,092 from the Interior Youth Basketball Organization to Lathrop High School to support the school's girls' basketball program. Approved the minutes from the regular meetings on October 2nd, October 16th, and November 6th, 2018, and January 15th, 2019. The work session on January 14th and the special meeting on January 14th continued to January 29th, 2019 as submitted and approved the personal action report for the period January 5th through the 25th, 2019. The board has acknowledged the personal information report for the period January 5th through the 25th, 2019, the budget adjustment report for the period January 1st through the 15th, 2019, the board's reading files, and the coming events and meeting announcements.
Next is our presentation on Agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on an Agenda item, it's action items or reports, will have three minutes to testify when that item is before the school board for discussion. There is a limit of one hour total testimony per item. Public comments on non-A agenda items. Our core value is collaboration. Engage with students, families, staff, and community to support student success. Public comments on non-A agenda items are limited to three minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People on the sign-up list will be called first and then if there is time, people who did not sign up may address the school board. A person testifying must state their name and city of residence for the record. Board members may ask questions for clarification. Although there is time at the end of each meeting for school board and superintendent comments, some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately as additional information may need to be gathered. So on the sign-up sheet, first I have Sandy Ryan.
See if I can find the sweet spot on the mic. Okay. My name is Sandy Ryan. I live in Fairbanks. I currently serve as the Fairbanks Education Association President. I came today to say thank you and to share some of the things that have been going on with the association over the last several months. Each and every one of you should be receiving an electronic newsletter. Many of the administrators and execs also receive it. In each one of those, there's usually some happening, something's going on, but I've never given you a report about what's happened. So I thought maybe since tonight was the State of the Union, I should maybe give it. So, some updates of what's happening. Last year, we started looking at workshops that teachers and counselors, librarians, therapists, psychologists, and other people that belong to Fairbanks Education Association have requested. We started with a simple restorative justice class. I contacted Dr. Duke at the university. He said I would love to do it. We fed them. That's important when people give up their time after school, we feed them. And so, our union hall holds about 25 or 30 comfortably if in a classroom setting. We had a waiting list. The class was a great success. We continued throughout last, last fall, not this immediate, but the fall before, looking at different workshops, working closely with teaching and learning. We put on things as diverse as how to conduct a successful parent-teacher conference, to Google 101 and what did it really mean. We then said, maybe we should ask. So we continued to ask at a broader base and so what, oop, there it goes. What we did is we sent out Google surveys and forms and we were able to get input from our members. The questions were twofold. We wanted to know what and we wanted to know who. What would you like to see and who do you think would be really good at giving it? The outpouring was amazing. Over last spring, we were able to offer 18 different sectionals on Saturday mornings. These are your teachers, your counselors, your librarians, your psychologists that have worked very, very hard throughout the week and have then got up at a nine o'clock call to attend a class, or members giving back to members and conducting it. Again, working with teaching and learning, we were able to offer a one-credit class. We continued this year with a blended opportunity, working closely with the National Education Association for some support funds. And what we have offered is an in-depth dive into Google Level 1 certification for educators. This is, ends in a three-hour grueling exam. It's not an easy accomplishment and we had several that completed it successfully. We are now in the midst of looking at National Board Certification for Jump Start. In fact, there's a class right now going on that I left. And so again, these are people giving their time and there's a way for them to get credit out of it as well. Finally, we'll be looking at the whole educator. So we'll have a wellness program in a couple of weeks. And the, one of the biggest success were our cuspuck-making classes where I learned that I really can't count even though I'm a math teacher because I always overfilled them and I always got in trouble by the instructors. All in all, over the past year and a half, we have seen over 400 educators come through the doors in various forms offering the classes. I just wanted to share that with you and if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We appreciated that State of the FEA. And next on my list is Kate Wool.
My name is Kate Wool and I live in the U Park District in Fairbanks and I have two daughters that go there. Today, I am here to express my gratitude to the school district. Specifically, I would like to thank Dr. Karen Gaboric, Heather Roundhorst, Heather Heineken, Sharice Walker, and the rest of the administration for both being receptive to conversation about and providing resources for additional gun safety education. This past October, for the first time, the district paid for and distributed the Asking Saves Kids rat cards to every kindergarten through 6th grade family. They have also provided information to interested schools on how to adopt programs like Start With Hello, a kindness-based inclusive program, and Say Something, an anonymous reporting website app or phone call for students who see something of concern or an emergency. These proactive approaches to educating our students, families, and communities on gun safety, kindness, and looking out for each other are a crucial step in preventing tragedies. Thank you. A couple few weeks ago, a North Pole Charter School student brought a handgun to school in their backpack. Fortunately, another courageous student reported this incident to an adult and it was swiftly dealt with. This situation could have been deadly, could have had deadly consequences for the students, faculty, staff, and community and shows the need for continuing gun safety education. And while this nationwide adult problem of not securing and unloading guns where children are present is in no way the district's fault, I believe the school district has the power to permeate the community with more gun safety education. I am here to ask the school board to please consider permanently funding in the safety or health part of the budget to print and pass out the Asking Saves Kids cards to every family from kindergarten through 12th grade every year, once a year. Repetition works and having these cards physically in the homes of students will naturally start conversations between parents on gun safety. I'm not sure of the district costs last October when you printed them in-house, but VistaPrint, an out-of-state printing company, can print 15,000 cards for $887.21 and ship in eight days for $12. All in all, it would cost the district about $1,000 a year. I would also like the board and the district to consider adopting the Say Something and Start With Hello programs permanently and require them for all schools, not just for the schools that ask. I believe the Fairbanks North Star Bro can be a great model for the state on how a community can work together on improving gun safety education and being proactive in trying to prevent any intentional or unintentional tragedies. Thank you for passing out these cards last October and thank you for considering them as a permanent fixture in your safety budget. A small investment of $1,000 could save our community from heartbreak in the long run and that seems priceless to me. Thank you. I brought the cards here for the school board in case you're unfamiliar with the program and I also brought the other information that Karen has made available to schools who ask. So I'll give that to Ms. Tuttle.
Let's see if any questions from the board and then if you give that information to Sharon and she'll make sure we each get one.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Any comments from the board or questions? Okay. Ms. Sanderson?
How long have you been with the program that you referenced?
So, we started the Asking Saves Kids program at University Park five years ago and it's been very successful. I think repetition helps. We pass it out twice a year in parent packets, once at the beginning of the school year and once at the end.
Okay, I don't see any other comments. Thank you for your work and your comments tonight. Next on my list is Randy Pitney.
I'm Randy Pitney, Chena Rich. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. First, I would like to say that I'm fully supportive of Ms. Wool's gun safety proposal. And secondly, we come from different backgrounds. Ms. Wool and I, apparently, we've had a discussion. We don't necessarily, I think, have the same philosophies on guns totally, but on these issues, we do. Firearms safety, or gun safety, gun storage safety, and adult responsibility. And there's two factors to that. One, to make sure your own guns are secure so that no unauthorized person can get to them. And two, make sure that where your kids are visiting houses, that there's not guns out available to them. The National Rifle Association and where I'm a member, and also USA Shooting, Olympic Shooting, which I'm a member, are both fully supportive of these and they advocate them greatly as the fire department has a stop, drop, and roll and you've heard campaigns about wearing your seat belts and don't smoke and say no to drugs and da-da-da-da-da. The National Rifle Association has a program called Eddie the Eagle that is, says, and you may all be familiar with it, but if you see a gun, don't touch, leave the area, tell an adult. Those are great. What Ms. Wool has here, though, is educating people ahead of time so that the guns aren't present, so they're not out there, so somebody's can see them. I saw her article in the paper the other day and we don't know each other especially and we found that there were several areas we probably were best not to discuss, but on those three elements there, I'm fully supportive of her thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have some questions from the board. Ms. Maradi?
Just a quick clarification. What was the name of the NRA program?
Eddie the Eagle. And actually, when I was the coach at the university rifle team, we took two and three student athletes out to different schools that would allow us in and, and put these programs on. They have three segments of the program. One for kindergarten, first, second, and then second, third, fourth, and then fifth and sixth grades. And they go out and there's coloring books for the kindergartners and things, but it's, it's just like the stop, drop, and roll. The National Rifle Association copied it from there, I'm pretty sure, or their marketing people did, but you see a gun, don't touch it, leave the area, tell an adult, stop, drop, and roll.
Great. And just thank you, Mr. Pitney and Ms. Wool, for bringing this to our attention. I appreciate it.
Any other questions from members of the board? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you for coming tonight and your comments. Okay. That's the, that's the end of the sign-up list. Is there anybody else who would like to testify on a non-A agenda item?
My name is Deborah Vino. I live in Fairbanks and I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I was listening to the consent agenda and all those fundraising requests. And of course, fundraising is always going to be an essential part of bolstering what we do in our schools, but I'm sure you heard that long list of libraries that were trying to fundraise, doing their spring book fairs and they usually do a fall book fair as well. And, and the reason so many of them are doing these fundraisers is that it's up to each principal how they allocate monies within their school. And some of these schools have good budgets and they're just adding on to what they have to do more. And some of them have nothing or almost nothing in their library budget. And so I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that and...
And so I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that, and, but make sure the public is aware of that, that our library budgets are up to each school, and they vary quite widely. So some of our schools are fundraising because that's the only, or very close to, the only money they get for books.
Is there any questions from the board? I don't see any, but thank you for coming up, Deborah. Testify. Anybody else want to testify on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. That brings us to information and reports. The goal here is effective communication, to establish relevant, inclusive, and consistent two-way communication to enable and encourage student, parent, staff, and community connectedness with the district, and increase the diversity of voices within the district. Superintendent Dr. Gaboric, accompanied by Andrew DeGrau, Chief Operations Officer, will present the administration's fiscal year 2019, '20 proposed budget.
Okay, thank you. So I believe Sharon will bring up the document that we have online, so I'll try to point you to pages as we go through. Andy and I are happy to be here tonight. This is the culmination of, oh, sweet spot, like Sandy said. Find it. Culmination of a lot of work putting together the proposed budget. And just so the public understands, this is my proposed budget to the school board. This is phase one of our budget process. The school board will then go through a series of work sessions, and by the end of March, actually, the Friday, the March 22nd, make final decisions about their, about your recommended budget to the borough, which needs to be delivered to the borough by April 1st. Then we wait to see what the Borough Assembly does, and then the board will come back, and depending on what the revenue is from both the state and the borough, then make those last decisions for approved budget. So this is the beginning of our spring budget season, as we like to say. And so I want to thank a couple people, Heather Heineken and Sandy Weaver in the back room. They do hundreds of hours behind the scenes putting this together. So they make Andy and I look good. That's how that works. So they make sure the numbers are right, and they pull everything together. And then Rebecca Herbie, also, who puts together these forward-facing documents, this whole book, and brings together the pictures, and by the end of approved budget, has lots of interesting things in there to support budget, and that illustrate the district's mission. So this is our second year with my budget file. Everybody has taken on my budget file fully and learned how to make our budget very transparent, which is the goal of my budget file, and much more user-friendly, which it did not used to be user-friendly at all. So this is a huge step forward. This is the second year of this overhaul. It will also, as I have mentioned a couple times, will be very helpful to us. The new ESSA federal law requires transparency with regard to budget, and so that you can show how funds are allocated to schools and why funds are allocated to schools, and if there are discrepancies, which there sometimes are, depending on student need, that you can very clearly explain what those discrepancies are. So I would like to go through my presentation entirely before we go to questions, and I'm just going to give sort of that 30,000-foot view, and then we'll, we'll take questions after that. So my philosophy with regard to the proposed budget, my attempt is to reflect the sentiment that I believe I've heard from board members this fall, and that's a shift from long-term planning for uncertainties in revenues and expenditures, a shift from that to meeting the needs of students in the current year. So that is where I'm coming from with regard to this budget. This budget, my proposed budget for the next school year, maintains essentially our current level of services for students with a few investments, few critical investments here and there. So we'll start with fund balance, and the page that I might refer you to is page one. And so many newspaper articles last year, lots of media, interest around fund balance, which has many different meanings, but just basically available funds that the district had, a lot of news coverage about the $33 million that we ended the year with. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna do some math from there to, to talk about where we're at with that, with this proposed budget. This school year, the current school year, we had a planned utilization of $12.7 million. 6.4 of that was from general fund balance that we committed, and then also about 6.3 from other funds. So just our planned utilization in this year takes us down to just over $20 million. Then, before December was even over, we had an unexpected, two unexpected utilizations of fund balance. The first was $3.1 million due to our, the decrease in enrollment in our October count. And so the challenging piece of that is when the October count is lower than the projected enrollment, you have to, it impacts the revenue in the current year, so you have to absorb that in the current year. We also allocated $7.4 million to the borough for two school roof projects. So that was an unexpected utilization of fund balance of $10.5 million. So that took us down to under $10,983 remaining in fund balance for this year. Backtracking, remember, we have a $12.7 million obligation just to start with. So I did not have enough money in unrestricted funds to even start to fill that hole. But again, responding to what I believe I heard from the public and the board, we pulled from other funds to meet our obligations for next year in my proposal. The bottom line, in terms of fund balance as of today, is that we have $2 million left in unrestricted operating fund balance. So that is 1%, which is extremely low. It is very likely that it will right-size itself to some degree at the end of the year through vacancies. I anticipate, again, this is a complete shot in the dark, but given recent trends, it will right-size itself to approximately $5 million, give or take. Again, we could end at four, we could end at seven. We'll have to see. But that is still $7 to $11 million below the minimum recommendation in school board policy that you passed a couple years ago, which is 6 to 8%. So 6 to 8% would be $12 to $16 million, and I don't think we'll hit that mark. So on page three, revenue assumptions, and I'll just talk about the high-level revenue assumptions here. About 62% of our general fund revenue comes from the state, that's about $130 million. 25% comes from the borough, it's about $51 million. 9% comes from federal funds, and 4% comes from other sources, and that includes use of fund balance. In this proposed budget, I am assuming no change to the base student allocation, $5,930. I have accounted for the decrease in enrollment, and so how that will impact our revenue next year. It's important to remember that when you're, we had the projected student enrollment, we're down over 300 students, and then our projection for next year is down even 95 lower than that. So we're looking at a difference of about 450 students from what we were projected this year to what we are hoping we'll have next year, and what next year's revenues will be based on. So that is a significant change. I have, I am assuming that the three-point, the $3 million that, from the forward funding from last year's legislative session, will be intact, and I'll talk about the legislative session in a bit. So this year, statewide, there was $20 million, that equates to $2 million to Fairbanks. You've seen that in the news. Next year, it was a $30 million amount that was forward-funded statewide, and that equates to about $3 million to Fairbanks. I've also assumed the same level of local contribution as last year, so about $51 million. Just a note, and I think the board, we need to have more conversation about this, the local contribution has dropped about 9% in the past three years. Our enrollment has dropped about 4%. So some conversation there is probably in order. And then also, in terms of revenue, obviously, increased use of operations fund balance and money from other funds. So in terms of expenditures, again, just those big picture, and you can see up in the graph here, 87% of our expenditures are salaries and benefits, because we employ people to serve students, so that's how we spend our money. Remember, we have over 1,600 full-time equivalent employees, and we actually have about 3,000 people that work for the school district, but we have many subs and temps and part-time folks, so. About 9% is in contracted services, 3% materials, 1% equipment, a little bit less than 1%, yeah, 1% goes to other items. So then on page five, we start with some of the program highlights. So again, what I've done is maintain a, the current level of services for students. So this, the important piece of this is I have proposed no change to the target class size. So target class sizes in this proposed budget, or is, for next year, are exactly the same at each level that they are, for next year that they are this year. So the teacher reductions that you'll see reflected are, will be implemented only where student enrollment is decreased, and the principals are very aware, we've been talking about this since October, where their enrollments are down. There's actually a couple of schools that are up, but they know that staffing will be adjusted according to their enrollment. And again, remember, that's about a 450-student drop. And another important piece that I don't think people understand is that even though our October count came in low, we maintained our staffing level because we have contract obligations. So we don't, in this district, in this state, we don't lay off teachers when the numbers come in low, we maintain those teacher contracts. So at the elementary level, district-wide, there will be a reduction just based on enrollment of 13 teachers. And then we have Discovery Peak Charter, starting in North Pole. And the way that we've handled that is we know that most of the draw, and as we watch the sign-ups for the lottery, most of the draw will come from the North Pole schools. So at this time, I've reallocated teacher staffing from the three elementary schools in North Pole, and also from North Pole Middle. And then Discovery Peak, very, I'm very grateful for this, will run their lottery early, they'll have it done by spring break, so then I'll know exactly where the kids come from, and before you need to finalize recommended budget, I can adjust staffing as needed. So for example, I took two, two positions from North Pole Elementary and Ticosuk Brown and Midnight Sun. If not that many kids come from those schools, then I'll shift those positions back, so we'll, we'll right-size that when the time comes. Just a couple investments at the elementary level. Joy School, as I, as we mentioned in a recent work session, was the only K-8 school that did not receive an additional teacher for support last year, so I've added a teacher for them this year to help support their K-8 expansion. And then, of course, with all the K-8 schools, we will watch their numbers come in and see where they're at with that. So adjustments certainly might be made, either up or down, depending. I've added a 1.0, a full-time prevention intervention specialist at Ticosuk Brown to help that school address some of their student needs. At the secondary level, so again, some teacher reductions based on enrollment, so district-wide it will be 8.7 secondary teachers. And then the draw for Discovery Peak will be two teachers from North Pole Middle. And remember, North Pole Middle is a middle school, they have all of the sixth graders in North Pole, so there will be kids, you know, we anticipate sixth graders wanting to go to Discovery Peak, and also seventh and eighth. So in case you had forgotten, Discovery Peak's target number is 200. That's their target enrollment overall, so. There's a few investments at the secondary level as well. Mr. Domke and Ms. Kraska have looked at the career technical education course requests over the past couple of years, and have increased the number of CTE teachers, 1.5 total, and so North Pole High School will get part of that, and West Valley High School will get part of that. And so that will, again, meet the needs of students at those schools wanting career tech ed courses. And then both North Pole High and North Pole Middle have part-time prevention intervention specialists now, so I'm going to increase both of those to full-time, so that they also can meet the needs of their students. And then district-wide, so this is page seven, we have a reduction in Andy's department. Andy's doing some contracting in his department, so we're going to cut 1.5 position in his department, and you can see there, it's an assistant accounts payable clerk and a purchasing agent. And then in terms of investments, we've been, we've had conversation for seven, seven years about needing to reclassify many of our support staff, our ESA positions. We've struggled with how to get at that. We have a number of positions that do need some adjustment, always rising to the top of that list are the grade-five secretaries. So I'm going to start trying to take a bite at that apple. So I'm proposing that we reclassify, and again, this is based on the recommendation of work done previously in past years, that we reclassify all of our grade-five secretaries to grade six. There are other groups that need attention. I have asked Ms. Morton, our HR director, to go back and work with ESA and really sort of together determine what those priorities are, and my thought is that in, you know, the coming years, or as money becomes available, that we'll just keep taking bites at that and try to right-size some of that. Another district-wide investment will be made in curriculum materials, both social studies and English language arts. And in the text, you can see information about those particular materials. The board often, well, we will have work sessions, and curriculum is often the topic of one of those work sessions, so Melanie Hadaway can go into great detail on that topic during one of those work sessions, and I'm sure the board will be interested to know more about that. Also, a cybersecurity officer, and so again, I'm hopeful that technology will be the topic of an upcoming work session. We had a security audit done, a cybersecurity audit, and we do have some issues that we need to address. All you have to do is read the newspaper, the struggles that Matt Su have had, the borough, the school district, Valdez, ransoms have been paid, data's been lost, it is still, they're still struggling with data issues. So we, this is our first attempt, or first step, I shouldn't say that, this is the next step to attempt to address our cybersecurity needs, so. So no particular page to refer to on these, just next couple of notes I have, but there's some things that the board needs to be very aware of, and again, I think have some robust conversations around between now and when you determine recommended budget, and then obviously approved as well. There are some costs that are going to, that we're going to need to address that are not included in this proposed budget, and one of those is our labor costs. So we are currently in negotiations with all three of our bargaining units, support staff, teachers, and principals. I've worked into the salary steps, which is a pretty standard decision that's made at the bargaining table, that people will continue to get steps I have not worked in. I, I don't know, we don't know the outcome of negotiations and what those salary increases will be, so that will be a significant cost that we need to address. The benefit rate will increase between 1% and 2%, and Andy can tell you more about that, if you have a question about that, but we, we annually, semi-annually, annually adjust the benefit rate to make sure that that continues to stay at the level it needs to stay at. And then again, Juno. So based on the governor's, you know, information that's coming out of the governor's office, I think that we, again, there was, he's proposing that this year's forward funding, right, be taken. I think we can expect that there will be a lot of conversation about next year's forward funding in that $3 million, so we just need to have that on the radar. And also remember that the governor, the legislature, they could also talk about other things. They could talk about the base student allocation and other ways that funding, that revenue could hit us sort of, in terms of the community cost assistance that goes to the borough. So if the borough gets hit, if the municipalities get hit, sometimes those costs get shifted to school districts. That would include PERS-TURs also. If PERS-TURs costs get shifted to the municipalities, then the districts may see the results of that, so we've got to keep an eye on all that. So we need to be thinking about revenue for these costs, both labor and benefit rate, and then potential decreases in funding from the state, and, and then we need to talk about the local contribution from the borough. So Ms. Walker and I will work on publishing information about how people can advocate, and I think our first effort is, needs to be focused on Juno, and I know the AASB has a fly-in this coming weekend, so that's great. The School Boards Association can kick that off. Mr. Grinkstad and Andy were down in Juno last week, and so that'll be important. And then the governor's budget released on February 13th will be very telling. And then, when the time comes, we need to shift our attention to the borough. So Andy and I can answer some questions for you. Again, we can get at those high-level questions, or COO-type questions. My recommendation would be if there's lots of questions about a particular department, that we collect those, and I've, and people are listening, so they'll take notes, and then what I think Ms. Dominique and I will do, and, and our, our conversation was, we meet Friday to talk about agendas, and I think we have four work sessions scheduled, so we can, you know, say, hey, we want, we know we want to talk about curriculum, we want to talk about technology, and schedule those so that you guys can really do some deep dives into that. So with that, we're, we're open to questions.
Hey, let me first go to the public, if there are any comments from the public on this topic. Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the board. And any questions from the board? Okay, Ms. Marotti?
So is it suggested that we ask all of our questions, and then they'll be collected, or should we?
So I think we, I mean, I can certainly take notes. If it's something that we can handle pretty easily right now, we will, and if it, you know, we feel like, you know, we need to be sure and get you more information, more accurate or in-depth information, we'll just collect those.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So I noticed that there's a $3 million increase in federal revenue. Is there, what's the thought behind that? Is there, what's the thought behind that? Or is that for sure?
Yeah, that's anticipated revenue that we'll be able to draw on for the 2020 school year. Basically, the district has taken averages and estimates based on our, we do, we submit an application by January 31st each year to the feds. We submit that to the state as well as the feds. And that number is based on estimates from that application, so. Significant volatility in years past, so that number does ebb and flow from year to year. And a lot of, a high degree of uncertainty. There's years in the recent past, they look back expecting X amount of dollars, getting 2 or 3 million more. Usually, we're not seeing less, fewer dollars, but significant volatility, so. Specifically for Impact Aid is what I was referencing. Sorry, I make sure that was clear, what I was referencing. The vast majority of the federal is Impact Aid. And then we get a few dollars, ROTC, the ROTC program, as well as some Medicaid reimbursements. Those are the three main components. But Impact Aid is the vast majority of that. So I apologize, I don't know if I clarified specifically what I was referring to.
Well, I just thank you for your presentation. And I'm glad to see the increase for the North Pole Middle, North Pole High School, considering, you know, some of the situations that we're encountering. So it's good to have that support with the staff and the schools covered.
Okay, Ms. Lambert?
So I just want to go back to fund balance for a little bit, just for a second. So we are starting off with less than $10 million in the general fund balance. And that's just, that's not the transportation and nutrition and everything else. It's just the general operating fund balance.
That's a cumulative number of the five funds that the borough is looking at. So it is a
So that's all funds combined.
Correct.
And so all funds combined, at the end of this budget cycle, we will have $2 million left.
At the end of 2020, that's our estimated number at the end of the budget that we're currently planning for, so the end of FY 2020.
So going into the, not this budget cycle that we, but the next budget cycle, we will be starting out in a significant deficit with no fund balance to cover anything.
And if you could come a little closer to the mic?
That's correct.
How big?
Well, we're, as Dr. Gaborik referenced, currently this year, we had about a $12.75 million hole that we had to cover that, without knowing exactly how much labor costs, benefit and salary costs that we'll be looking at in negotiations, this negotiating cycle, it's safe to assume that it would be at least that $12.75 likely higher than that that we'd be looking at.
I would say almost double.
I think, and also the $3 million in forward funding. Again, that's an assumption that we don't have the luxury of every year, so. Again, high might be 18 million, low, yeah, I mean, it'll be a big number. The board's gonna have to make some hard decisions.
Just on a philosophical point, I disagree with using all of our fund balance for this year. I know the board has already spoke, but I personally disagree with it because I think that the abyss that we're going to find ourselves in the next year, we're not going to, we're not going to be able to recover from without significant revenue sources, including the borough actually stepping up and probably maxing out.
Ms. Marotti?
Sorry. Can you explain the 1.7 million in revenue, the other revenue, where that's coming from? Is that all fund balance?
I want to make sure I know exactly what number you're referencing, Ms. Marotti. Which page?
It was on the smaller one, the 37.
Which page are you on in the?
So if you're in the budget book, it would be on page 22, other financing sources at the bottom, right?
Okay, are you looking at the difference number?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that would be the difference from the approved 2018-19 budget to the estimated budgeted amount for 2020.
Right.
So that would be the $1.7 million increase from the $6.6 million to the 7.8 that we're proposing currently.
Right, but where is that coming from? Because it's under other. Is it general fund?
Yes.
Did you have other questions?
So I noticed that the school district is going to see a decrease in sped support staff. In your opinion, can we afford a cut to sped support staff? Or am I reading that incorrectly?
Right, so I think that would be a great question for Derek to answer at a work session and could really talk through because their staffing is based on student needs and where they're seeing kids and populations of kids. So I think if we could save that one for him and he could kind of walk through that.
Yep.
Can I comment on that as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, we looked into that a little bit. As Dr. Gaborik mentioned, we'll defer to the specialized department on that. We looked into it at a high level. We saw a decrease in support, but also an increase in the instructional area. So oftentimes, for example, a department will have some kind of flexibility and latitude on where they assign, make those assignments, as Dr. Gaborik mentioned, based on specific needs within the buildings.
I'm looking at the student enrollment for per school. Is there any way that the board can get a capacity, a report that shows the capacity for each school, specifically Ryan?
Yeah, thank you. When I read your question in email, we are updating that information for you. And I'll have it at the next work session, the capacities and then the current enrollment. So you can see every single school and where they're at. And then we'll have highlighted the schools that are below 80% is how we've been highlighting those. So you'll, you can see that. Yep, we'll have that for the next work session. Thank you for forwarding that to us.
Okay, and I have a couple of questions. Along the lines of Ms. Lambert, you know, the, what the impact is on our fund balances. And I just wanted to check the equipment replacement fund in our district attempt to start to plan forward to meet these needs. That basically doesn't totally disappear, but we want, but the effectiveness of that fund really is depleted.
It is, yeah. So we, again, sort of just based on my sense of things from conversations with the board, I have depleted that. I think we're like 1.4 million in there and we were going to plan forward with some of that. So I've depleted that. What's left in there is this, it's about $800,000. It's formulaic and we pull a 50%, I think, of supplies and equipment from the schools. And then we leverage those funds for bulk purchases. We've been focusing on student devices. We probably won't be able to get too much beyond that. Another issue, again, in terms of, that we were attempting to address, but now have pulled back in terms of replacing capital equipment. And the biggest example is in our maintenance department. And again, our fleet, our fleet vehicles, you know, 12, 13, 14 years old. And so, so we were trying to move in that direction and now we're not. So at some point, we've got to, I think, address that.
So again, underscore is the, as we pull down that fund balance extremely low, where it does bind our hands, especially as we go forward.
It does. And, you know, it's one of those things, completely recognize that the priority is always on the classroom and support to students. But to run a school district, you need things like trucks and, you know, equipment and supplies and that sort of stuff. It's really, you know, it doesn't sort of motivate anybody to go advocate to Juno for for equipment. But without a plan, again, at some point, we're going to be suffering, so.
Thank you. My other question was on page three. Those percentages at the bottom, which are for the 1920 school year, for salaries and contracted services, et cetera. It brought to mind that the state used to use a 70% target for instruction, focus on instruction. And if I'm correct, that besides that breakdown in the bottom, but direct instructional services to students would actually be about 79%.
Do we have a chart of that somewhere? Do you know that number? Fairbanks always far exceeds that.
Right.
Yeah, you're pretty close. It fluctuates in the 76 to 78, 79 range from what I've seen the last few years.
Right, okay. And I think that's what it would be then in this, in this, but I think that's an important, even though the state doesn't hold as, quite as accountable as they used to, that, but a good target for making sure we're serving kids.
I think for the rural areas, they ended up waiving that so often that they made adjustments. And again, it wasn't impacting us, so I didn't track the specifics of it.
Right.
They've relaxed some of that statewide.
Let me check if there are other questions from the board? Ms. Marotti?
So I ran some numbers and I noticed some weird ratios that came up. For example, like enrolled students to support staff ratio for Ticosic Brown, Barnett and U Park and Arctic, they have lower student to support staff ratios than other elementary schools. And so I know this isn't a question that we can answer probably tonight, but it's definitely something I want on the radar. Also, in contrast, Weller and Rhode River have higher support staff to student ratios. And then Hutchison High School has the lowest enrollment, yet the second highest student to support staff ratio. So I know that support staff is a high importance topic right now. So I just want to make sure, and equity as well. So I want to make sure that it all makes sense, that we have good reason for some weird ratios out there.
No, thank you.
Could I pause you just for a second?
Yeah.
We have to make an announcement.
Yeah.
We'd like to take a moment to welcome our radio listeners. If you are just joining us, we are currently on Agenda Item D, the information and reports. And just a reminder that the regular school board meetings now begin at 6 o'clock. Please check out the school board's website for a full listing of available viewing and listening options. That's the end of our commercial. May answer. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So equity, and that'll be a great conversation when we talk about federal programs. So remember, schools that are designated Title I do get additional funds. And often those funds are used in the form of support staff, so tutors and things like that. So I think we can, I sent, I sent that list and questions out and we'll have folks respond to that. We also, there's also a small schools adjustment in staffing for some of our schools. And this is more actually about teaching staff, but it does relate to support staff too, because, you know, you still, you can, you can't be formulaic in all your support staff because you still need a, you know, at least one secretary, sometimes two, and a nurse and a custodian regardless of the size of school. So there's adjustments that are made there. And then we pay particular attention to like Ileson High School, again, sort of a small school. And then Hutch got some additional staffing when it was first envisioned and became the current Hutchison High School to support their career tech ed programs. So we'll, we'll definitely get back with you on the specifics of those.
Okay. I'm sorry. Ms. Marotti?
Last one, I promise. Well, for now. So I noticed the decrease in the district admin staff, the accounts payable and purchasing. Do the, does the rest of that department, can they absorb that capacity?
Yeah, I think the, my department is constantly looking at efficiencies. We've built in several new software tools in the last few years and just constantly looking at how we can do the same job with, you know, more efficiently. In the end, I think it's important for us to keep an eye on the ball as far as our responsiveness and our level of service that we're providing for schools. Because ultimately, our efficiency, our effectiveness has either a positive or negative trickle-down effect to schools. If we aren't able to do our jobs, if we aren't able to provide that responsiveness to the schools, that negatively impacts students in the end. So we feel somewhat confident in this reduction. I will say, you know, it's not without likely some heartache and, pain's too strong of a word, but some efforts being made to be able to absorb these reductions. But I think, I feel confident that we can, we can get the job done and maintain a high level of service.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we want to say thank you very much to you and your staffs for the work on this. And I think for our listening audience, particularly want to make note of the fact that, as you mentioned, we have four work sessions scheduled for this. And there is two months of meetings to discuss this. So plenty of opportunity for us to hear from the public. And we would appreciate the public comment, both what you like and what you think we need to look at. I mean, those are both important things. And that I know we'll be getting down into more details as we go along, but really appreciate the overview that you gave us this evening.
Thanks. And I would just encourage board members, as you think of questions, if you'll send them to me and then we can prepare for them. So, and just, you know, especially if we need to, you know, pull anything together for you in handouts or things, so, you know, thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to give Dr. Gaborik a moment to get back to, or stay right there. So next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. This is part of our effective communication goals. Establish relevant, inclusive and consistent two-way communication to enable and encourage student, parent, staff and community connectedness with the district and increase the diversity of voices within the district. And so Superintendent Dr. Gaborik will provide a superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I'll start off, it's my pleasure to read a proclamation, annual proclamation from the Office of the Governor, our new governor, Dunlevy, for Career and Technical Education Month. So I'll read that, dated January 24th, 2019. Whereas Career and Technical Education, CTE, offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical and employability skills necessary for true career readiness and, whereas Career and Technical Education provides students with career exploration opportunities and authentic, meaningful experiences earlier in their educational experience, which enables them to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework, as well as the pursuit of established programs of study and career pathways. And whereas leaders from both state and nationwide businesses and industry report increasing challenges related to the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE fields, including healthcare, education, energy, natural resources, information technology and STEM. And whereas CTE prepares students for fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education, often leading to dual credit and the attainment of industry-recognized credentials. And whereas the Alaska Departments of Education and Early Development, Labor and Workforce Development and the University of Alaska System are jointly implementing the statewide CTE plan to ensure a comprehensive, integrated career and technical education system for Alaska. And whereas ensuring that Alaskan employers have access to qualified workers is a crucial step in ensuring productivity among the business and industry communities, as well as continued economic growth and global competitiveness. Now therefore I, Michael J. Dunlevy, Governor of the State of Alaska, dear hereby proclaim February 2019 as Career and Technical Education Month in Alaska and urge all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the CTE programs in Alaska and support and participate in these programs. So we'll pass that out to the schools so they know that, so. And as you know, we have a great career tech ed program in this district, so I'm very proud of that. I have a few things, the, we have two calendar options open for public comment from all stakeholders now, parents, staff, anybody who's interested for the 2020, 2021 school year. People can access the survey online on our front website. There's a, there's a button right there that you can push. The input period closes this Friday, so if you want to weigh in on those two calendar options for the calendar year 2020, 2021, do that soon. Nick Hanson, the Eskimo Ninja Warrior, was in town last week and it was amazing. He was so great. He spent two days in our schools. He spent two days in our schools and just did a wonderful job with our students. I want to thank Sean and Kate LaPlante for putting together this schedule, and especially Kate LaPlante, who spent the full two days with him and went around with him like she was the celebrity handler. So, like, he just mobbed, he was mobbed for autographs. You know, he's such a kid magnet, so she just, and she drove him around and just did a wonderful job. So I'm so thankful to her, that was really amazing. And Delta School District partnered with us to bring him to the interior, so they also enjoyed him for a day. So Nick is just terrific, so. Education Elements is in town again this week. So Andy Shaw and Megan Hewnick worked with our secondary personalized learning teams today, and I got this really exciting, excited email from Lathrop, and they're so inspired with their future plans. So that's, just things like that are just heartwarming. Tomorrow, Andy and Megan will work with our district-wide personalized learning council. And so we'll talk about district-wide efforts and look forward. Negotiations have begun with the Principals Association and the Teachers Association. Those proposals are posted online, both from the district and from the associations, if anybody's interested in reading those. And then classified staff have their meetings scheduled in the next few weeks. Last Friday, it was my pleasure to, I was invited to the Republican Women's Luncheon, and they invite me each year, and this year it was in front of budget, which was great. So I got to present the budget to them, lots of questions about budget and just efficiency of services in the school district. So it was a good conversation, and I appreciated talking with that group. I also took Andy DeGraw with me, and so they got to meet him as well, which was good. As you guys, some of you, I think three of you head down to Juneau. The one piece of legislation that has my attention right now is SB 30, and it's around dual credit, and specifically the middle college concept. I am, and the Superintendent's Association, very supportive of the idea. The concerning language is it's a mandate for all districts. So they just need to lighten up on that a little bit, and I'll send you my testimony so you can, you know, see my perspective. So when you start mandating things statewide, one size doesn't fit all. And there just needs to be some sensitivity around that, so. But, and I will also send with you, if you remind me, well, I think I gave it to you guys, all of our dual credit options. Remember those sheets? So there's tons of ways to get dual credit. And so just, just so you have that information in your head. President Dominique, Andy DeGraw and I met with Mayor Ward and Chief of Staff Jim Williams last Friday, and we talked about budget, we talked about the process and just timelines. And so that conversation went well. And of course, Mayor Ward is working on his budget too. His timelines are about a month behind mine, so he's still kind of wrapping his head around the numbers for the borough. Tonight, you heard about the proposed budget tomorrow morning. I've already filmed a video that gives the highlights, pretty much exactly what you just heard from me, and so we'll post that online. We also have a Facebook Live event specifically regarding budget that I'll be doing. And so different from the one we're doing, I'm doing one this week with Ms. Marotti too. I've invited her to join, and I'm going to get Ms. Sanderson up there if I can, if I can get her to join me one of these times. She hasn't responded to that email, so we'll get her. But this Facebook Live event is going to be scheduled at 5:30 on February 20. And so I'm hoping an evening event, and so anybody, of course, can tune in. And if anybody in the community has questions about budget, I can entertain those at the time. So Facebook Live is a good opportunity for interactive dialogue. And then next week I'll be gone, and so I'll be at the National Superintendent's Conference, and a couple of big things are going to happen. And huge thanks to the school board, because you've been so supportive of this. It's been a two-year effort, two-year, three, two-and-a-half-year effort. I'll be finishing my national certification, superintendent certification program, and I will officially graduate, so that will be exciting. And then also, that's when all 50 of the state Superintendent of the Year winners are acknowledged, sort of during one of the big general sessions. So that'll be, that'll be a fun event. So again, thank you so much for your support of not only my work here in the district, but also statewide and at the national level. So I really appreciate that. And with that, I concludes my report. So, thank you.
Okay, any comment from, or questions from the testimony from the public? If I can get it out. Seeing none, let's come to the board. Any questions you have for Superintendent? No, okay, well, thank you very much for that support, that report. Okay. That brings us to Action Items, Old Business. With the core value of safe environment, provide a safe learning environment. This is Policy 578, Employee Rights and Interests, Transportation of Students. Second reading, Policy 578 addresses district employees' rights and interests in providing transportation for students in their private vehicles. The proposed modification would forbid district employees working in their capacity as district employees from transporting any student unless they have prior authorization. Additionally, the proposed revision requires district employees to understand when they are acting in the capacity of a district employee or a private citizen. For second reading, the proposed policy has been revised for clarity based upon board member input during first reading and feedback from the work group. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve second reading, public hearing, and adoption of Policy 578, Employee Rights and Interests, Transportation of Students.
Second?
Any comments from the administration?
Yes, thank you. So I will open, and then I'm going to turn it over. We've got a team of folks here led by Ivory McDaniel. And I would ask that you let administration make our entire presentation, because I think we can answer some of the questions upfront, and then so you can hear that. I just have a couple opening comments. So both of these policies are the result of years of struggling with these issues. It's not one particular incident that's prompted these, although when an incident does rise to a concerning level, the question has been, what are the guidelines around this? And needing clarity, or in some cases, something at all that provides guidance, guardrails basically, to employees. So that is the goal. These policies are a response to rare emergency situations that do occur. I mean, they happen. And the goal is to provide guidelines that protect not only the employee, but also the district, and also students. And we absolutely recognize the liability issues that are here. And we're very cognizant of those, but we've had a work group, and Ivory will describe the work group of multiple people who were involved with these issues. And we're trying to attempt to address the reality of working in public education and with kids, and being parents, and also being school employees. The challenge is, is that you cannot have a zero liability in anything in public education. It's just not possible with kids. If we were to do that, it would require that employees never respond to emergency situations with students, and we just don't feel like that's the goal. There are times when, and again, very rare, where it's appropriate. It's also important to know that many of our employees are also parents. They have their own children who interact with the children of other staff who are enrolled in the school district. And there are slumber parties, and there are rides being shared to practice and to school. And so the parent, again, there's more gray there than there's black and white. Again, if you want zero liability, it would require that employees could never act as parents, and I just, I don't think that's what we want for our community. So what we do want are clear guidelines for employees in emergency situations. That's what we're trying to get at here. And if, and if an employee feels like they need to act in that capacity, then how do they go about doing that? So with that, I'll turn it over to Ivory and other folks.
Thank you. So I do want to start first by talking about the work group that has extensively worked on both this policy and the next policy that's going to be presented. We have a long list of people I had to write down just to recall. Everyone in the room that helped us. We have both the Assistant Superintendents, Sean Kraska and Kate LaPlante, that supported this work group. We had Sandy Ryan, the FEA president. We had the previous ESA president, and also Jasmine Atkins-Browns, when she came on board as well. We had Dave Foshee, the Assistant Principal at West Valley High School. Robin Taylor, the Principal at Hutchison High School, who also acts as the FPA president. We had two social services managers, Linda Franny and Leona McDaniels, that worked in the work group as well. And we had a counselor, Dr. Samantha McMorrow, in addition to myself, that extensively worked over this policy over the last year. We came together first last spring to draft the policy. We had extensive vetting throughout the district. We worked very extensively together, and then we took the policy to principals, asked the principals to take the policy to their staff. We received feedback from throughout the district, from principals, from different staff members. And we took that, we incorporated the changes, and within the fall, we all came back together as a work group to finalize that. And that's what came before you in the first reading. We took your feedback from the first reading. We revised it as a work group. We took it back to the principals, and this is what we've come to with the second reading. And so I'll just go through it quickly with you, and we can address any questions that you might have with the policy.
And I just want to mention that we have done continued touch bases with legal counsel as well.
Yes, sorry. On my extensive list at the bottom also talks about legal. Yes, and we have closely worked, we have closely worked with legal on this as well, to ensure that we're meeting statutory requirements for mandated reporting and things of that sort as well. So absolutely, we've worked with legal on that as well. So as Dr. Gaboric indicated, it's a rare instance that this happens. And so the stance is that employees should not be transporting students. But in those rare and emergency situations, we wanted to provide parameters for those employees on what to do. And so the first sentence talks about the stance that you should not be transporting students. The second talks about what to do in those emergency situations. And the expectation is that the employee would notify his or her supervisor immediately on the need to transport that student, so that there is awareness of the emergency and how we can support both the employee and the student. The second paragraph of the policy is not a change. That is the current language that's in the policy. And then the third paragraph of the policy here indicates that we want employees to understand when they're acting in the capacity of a district employee versus that of a community member. As Dr. Gaboric said, our staff members, our teachers, our support staff, us here in the administrative building, we are also parents, we're also neighbors, we're also community members. And so we have to understand when we're acting in that capacity versus that of a district employee. And so that's the rundown of 578, if there's any questions on that.
First, I think we go to public comment. So is there any public testimony on this agenda item?
I really didn't want to get up like three times. I was hoping you'd do them all together. Sandy Ryan, Fairbanks. I had the pleasure, and I'm speaking as an individual, not as the FPA president. I had the pleasure of serving on this committee, and as Ivory mentioned, it is, was definitely a diverse and dedicated group, trying to get some language that as a parent, because I was once a parent of small children in the district, and now I'm a parent of large children, and they're still children. But that you knew what to do when you're transporting kids. I mean, we were always, if we show the line that didn't change, it's like underneath there, yeah, that's the one. It pretty much says you can't drive kids. That's kind of was the interpretation. And that's not realistic as a parent. So we were, we were very careful on looking at, when is there an emergency and you need to contact your supervisor? Versus, I'm just taking the soccer team to practice, and I'm not the coach, I'm just a parent. And we really wanted to make a difference there. And so as we share this with employees, with members of all the different groups, that were clear that the district employees, it might be required by mayor's or supervisor, transport students either district or non-district vehicles. That was all that was there. So you were told that you are not required to, but it didn't say what happens if you did. So I think it's very important that we get the language in place.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Ms. Lambert?
No, okay.
Thank you for your testimony. Anybody else from the public wish to testify? Okay, seeing none, welcome back to the board. Questions or comments from the board? Ms. Lambert?
So I wasn't here last time, but I did listen to all the questions and comments that were coming out from the December 4 meeting. So I remember three years ago, we had a hearing in this room, and none of you were on the board at the time. And one of the takes that I came out with that, which I ended up voting no, it was an employment termination, and I voted no on it, was that you're an employee 24/7. And that's a district employee 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And I disagreed with that, because we are moms, we are, we are other, you know, that, because we have other, others, you know, we're not, we're not an employee 24/7. If you're in the military, you're an employee 24/7, and things apply to you, but that's not us. So I disagreed with that, but that's the precedence we set, that we are an employee 24/7 as a district employee. So there is no mom hat under that theory. There is no other hat under that theory. So I want to know what we consider as an employee. Are we, the timing of an employee, are you an employee? Does the district feel that, and it's how I feel, that you're an employee, when you clock into work, you're an employee that whole day? And then when you clock out of work, you're no longer an employee? You take off your employee hat and you, and you put your, your mom or your community member hat or whatever hat? That's how I would see as an employee, and I would, and that would make sense for this particular, how it's written right now. But this policy doesn't make sense if we're an employee, a district employee 24/7. And so I want to know how we define employee as far as, when do you stop being, when do you put your employee hat on, and when you take your employee hat off? And how does the district, how does the district view that? Whether you're classified or you're, you know, a salaried employee or whatever? Is it, is it when you're driving to work, are you an employee? Is, which hat are you, which hat are you wearing then? When you're leaving work, which hat are you wearing then? If you happen to see a child in need walking down the street in the middle of the night, and you want to stop and help that child, are you an employee at that point in time? So I'd like to see it defined, because I think it really, on how we define it as a district, because I think that really affects how the policy should be written, and whether they're good the way they are, or whether they need to be tweaked, or whether it just needs to be defined in the policy. That's my first kind of, whether you want to call it rhetorical or not, I'd like to see how we define it, because I don't agree with how we defined it three years ago. I just don't. I didn't then, I don't now. But that's the precedent we set three years ago. Different board, and I think we need to talk about that, how it's defined. So I don't necessarily have a problem, a big problem with this particular policy as long as we define it correctly. I do want to know what immediate means. Immediate is, is, means something different to everybody. Is it before, during, or after, and how much time? Is it notification, or do you have to get authority from your supervisor before you drive a child that is left at school home? I mean, I think that if your supervisor is there, you should get authority, and they should know before you drive the child home that you are going to do this, or whatever it is that that situation is. Even in an emergency, unless the child is on the street, if we define employee by 24/7, you would be able to get authority from your supervisor to, to, you know, transport a child in those circumstances. So I think, I think there's, I think we need a little bit more work.
Staff want to respond to definitions or where you are with that? Or do you want to take it under advisement right now?
I don't think I can give an exact answer on what, how to define an employee, because I think that it's, it really is situational. And it's just, as you said with the, you know, whether it's an emergency, because what you indicated has an emergency of a student being left at the school and needing a ride home, maybe would not constitute an emergency opposed to a child that you see walking down the street when it's 40 below. So I just think it's all very situational, so I understand the concerns that you're bringing forward. I'm not sure that you're going to have a policy that's going to catch every one of those situations in its entirety very specifically. So this policy is aimed to provide guidance to our employees and protections for our students as well that are in this gray area. And if there's questions that they have, then they're communicating with their supervisor as well. We can talk with both the Assistant Superintendents. They know more about the ground level at the school building and how that's facilitated. But I think it would be very difficult to have a policy that has that, that has that specific in it.
One thought might be too, again, and so if this needs more work, I hope we do leave ourselves some room for that, you know, because we can certainly bring it back. Because I, we feel like we need to get there. You know, we need to keep working to get there, because we, without this, we're just swimming with nothing. So again, if that's the will of the board, we'll take it back. But one thought might be working on ARs too, that, you know, list example situations. I'm just thinking out loud right now, you know, sort of different scenarios where, that might clarify some of that. It's just an idea off the top of my head.
Did you have a follow-up?
Okay.
So I don't.
Let me start, Jerome.
I don't mind the ARs. We've done that before, and many of the policies that were more general in nature, and we followed up with ARs. But those ARs were also included with the policy, so we kind of had the idea. But those ARs were also included with the policy, so we kind of had the idea. So...
That's what I was thinking of, maybe we could construct some ARs and bring those with, so that you can, that might be a way to, to do that.
Mr. Jerome?
I just wanted to touch briefly on this. My first comment is that good ideas are only good ideas when stakeholders are on board, and that's sort of my belief in a lot of this. And I'm, so I'm really glad that we did have all the input from the principals and teachers and everybody. And then, sort of to play off of the, are you an employee 24/7, is the other side of it which concerns my constituency, is are you a student 24/7? Are you a student 24 hours a day, seven days a week? And, you know, the, the obvious answer for me being no. You know, when I'm in that building, I'm a student. The final bell has rung. I'm still probably a student until I leave that building. But, again, with the case of emergencies, I am a, I am a student, even as I walk home, I'm a student of the school district, but I'm also a private citizen as well. And so, I think that having it in there that says it is the responsibility of all district employees to understand when they're acting in the capacity of a district employee or as a private citizen is important. And I think that, you know, with policy in general, you sometimes have to engineer ambiguity in there, because you can't address every, every possible black and white situation. It is a color of gray, so sometimes you have to engineer that ambiguity in there, so that you have room to, when you have a hearing, address it as it was meant to be addressed. So, that's just my take on it.
Ms. Marotti?
I appreciate all the hard work that the administration has done on, and staff has done on this policy, and I recognize that fully. I agree with the first two paragraphs, that third paragraph though, I'm going to agree with Ms. Lambert, and ask that it be clarified if possible. And then I have a silly question, I don't know what ARs are.
Oh, sorry. Administrative regulations. So, the guideline around policy is that, you know, the policy sort of defines the what, and then the administrative regulation gets it how. So, you know, the details of implementation, so that, it just might be an idea that we could bring back.
Other questions from the board? Ms. Lambert?
So, just to jump on what Ms. Marotti said is, I don't, I don't think it's fair that our district employees have to determine on each circumstance whether or not they're acting in their capacity as a district employer, or whether they're acting in a private capacity. I think having examples laid out where they can give some similarities, like, okay, well, in this particular type of situation, I would be acting as a private citizen. In this particular type of situation, I would be acting in my capacity as a, as an employee, so that there's at least some guidelines around their decision-making. Without the guidelines, everybody's going to have their own idea of what is, whether they're an employee or whether they're not an employee. And so, I think just having, you know, maybe delaying for a little bit and having that AR, so, you know, not every situation, of course, is going to be outlined in an AR, but some general guiding principles where people can get an idea of, like, you know, if I'm transporting my neighbor's kids to school in the morning, am I acting in my personal or my, or my professional capacity? Or if I'm driving down the street, it's 20 below, and I see a student walking, and I want to pick him up and take him home, and it's, you know, after hours, is that private, or is that in my, you know, in my employee capacity? So, just some general ideas where people don't have to guess, because there's some general guiding principles that are available for them to understand where their situation would actually fall.
And I've got a couple of questions. I have a problem when I see forbids as a, it's a very negative connotation and approach. And in actuality, the next policy we're going to be considering starts out on a, on a more positive proactive, a district employee and the performance, et cetera. And I would, I don't know if there was a specific reason to go to forbids, or that was, you know, but I think a more positive approach on that, that says they shall not transport students, but just moving that a little bit. Is there a distinction between the phrase and the performance of his or her occupational duties, and then the phrase for school purposes? They almost seem redundant, or do you have a distinction in mind on that?
So, I want to understand your second question, but on the forbids portion, the wording was already in the policy. And so, we, we, the work group did take that language into consideration, and we did choose to keep it in there. But it's something that we definitely can look at. I mean, and I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand the second question, if you can repeat that.
Okay, the, okay, so, just ask the original version that was given, that's, there's a paragraph then that's missing on that, is that correct? On the sheet here, when you go down further, on the next page. Okay, so that original version was only the one part of the, is that correct? I'll say there's the paragraph before it. Okay, okay. Okay, that's just what I wanted to check, so, all right. If that was in the original one, I still think we should look at.
Absolutely.
My question is, we have in the first line, the employee in the, with the phrase, in the performance of his or her occupational duties, and then, just beyond that, to transport students, the phrase for school purposes. Is there a distinction why we need both of those there, as opposed to just saying?
Okay, I understand what you're saying, absolutely. No, that, that can be redundant, I see, I understand what you're saying there, absolutely.
Okay. The, another question on definition, emergency situations, and I, I don't want to nitpick this one, I can go back and forth, I mean, sort of common sense is emergency, but at the other hand, it might not really be emergency, but it's, it's a real exception to, to make things work. Did you have any conversation in the group with that?
We did. We had, it's hard to think back to all the different conversations and all the different scenarios. I think we were, or I know, we were using the, the term or the phrase, in an emergency situation, an emergency type situation, similar to what you just said, Mr. Bourne, the, the exception. You know, it's not the everyday occurrence, it's not more of an afterthought, it is an emergency situation. It's highly unusual, highly exceptional, if that, if that helps clarify.
Right, it does, and I...
And I just wanted to add, I, I agree with a little bit of redundancy in that. I think our intent is, we mean the same thing.
Right.
In our performance of our job.
Right.
In our role as whatever it is we are, teacher, administrator, what have you, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Jerome?
In the, the part that says, "The board forbids any district employee in the performance of his or her occupational duties to transport a student for school purposes," could the nature of that redundancy be to specify the difference between a teacher acting in a school capacity and a student being engaged in something with school? Because the way that I see that, you could have a teacher acting in their occupational duty, transporting students to a non-school something, but you could also have a school employee but not acting in an occupational duty, transporting somebody for school purposes. Is that the purpose of that? Saying both occupational duties and school purposes?
No, I would say, both of those are very good examples, Mr. Jerome, but no, I don't, I think we were just trying to clarify language, but I see how you read both of those, different kind of possible ways to transport a student.
Okay.
You could be a student going to a school activity, or you could need a ride up the road for something completely non-school related, but I could be your teacher and see that, and it might be 40 below, and I don't want you out walking in the cold.
Yeah.
And you have no coat, no hat, no gloves, and I, in my opinion, I'd say that's an emergency, and I need to either assist or make some phone calls and get you some help.
Yeah, thank you. So, I guess from my perspective after that, I would want to, in my, my opinion would be to keep that, just because I can see where that would be, where you could have two, those two different scenarios there. But that's just my take on it.
Ms. Anderson?
So, I'm just uncomfortable with this still, I just think it still needs to be a little bit more clear, because I'm just looking at scenarios running through my head that I don't want a voice, that could possibly happen, and have someone be liable, or be in jeopardy, or have a situation that come up that they meant absolutely no harm, they gave a ride to a child, got them where they were supposed to be, but, you know, it, so, do we know what other district language, if any, about these two policies? Do we have any other language to go on from other districts?
I have not seen similar language within the state, within the other larger districts. I, I would say though, about, in terms of your comment about employees and them being liable during situations, this really is to provide them guidance on how to handle those situations. And it's not any, it's not an attempt to trap or any of, anything of that sort. This really is to provide guidance, because it's been such a gray area for several years of employees seeking guidance on this, and, and the district wanting to provide that to them and provide a consistent answer. And so, that, that really is the intent. It's, it really is a protection for the employee to provide that guidance to them.
Ms. Lambert?
So, a given situation, you see a kid walking down the street, you're going home, it's 20 degrees outside, negative 20, they don't have a coat on. So, if, under this, I could make the decision that I'm not acting in my personal, in my capacity, and none of this would apply to me. Right? So, I wouldn't have to notify anybody, because I make the decision that I'm acting in my private capacity, because I'm not at school, and I'm not acting as a district employee at the time, I'm just helping a child in need, so none of this would apply.
That's correct.
I, any other questions?
Do we want to postpone?
That, and that's what I was going to suggest, if the board might want to do that. I think that the, the intent of this is really, really good, and I know as a principal, teachers sometimes want to, you know, when I could say no, that was very, very relieving for them. And, and we want to protect not only our students, but we want to protect our employees from getting in a bind on situations with all good intents. But we don't want this to, to go away. And the, the work that the collaborative group has done on this, I think is really, should be really commended. And, and so, with that said, let me bring it to the board. We do have some questions. We could, if the board desires, we could move to postpone, so that it continues that process, but keeps it...
Administration would be very supportive of that, supportive of that, and we'll just keep working it till we get it to where you feel comfortable that you can pass it, hopefully. Yep.
Do, do we have to postpone to a specific time, or?
We should, but if you don't, it's fine.
I, maybe, I would say request future meeting, just because it's a large stakeholder group, and it might, like, we wouldn't have time probably to work on it for the next meeting, but we might, you know, just because of posting requirements. So, if you give us a little latitude there, we can bring the group back together, so.
And if, and, and the idea of being sooner rather than later?
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll get them together as soon as we can, but posting for the next board meeting actually comes up sooner than we'll probably be able to do the work, so.
All right, okay. Is there a motion from?
Well, I might say this wrong, but, first of all, I just want to say thank you for all this work, and I just need, I just want the employees to have clarification as to, I want them to have some guidelines, because I don't think anybody should have to guess, at least some, some working guidelines. But move to postpone, do we, second reading, or just, yes?
Move to postpone, second reading.
Right, okay. Move to postpone, second reading, public hearing, and adoption of policy 578, employee rights and interests, transportation of students to a future meeting.
Second.
Let me go to the public, is there any comment? Seeing none, back to the board. Any discussion questions? Seeing none. Sharon, would you call the rule, please?
Colonel Fisher?
No.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
No.
Miss Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so that'll be postponed to a future meeting, and again, we wanted to say thank you to the staff and the working group to address an important issue that's of interest to all of us, students and staff, so. So, don't be discouraged. That brings us to our next old business item, policy 580, housing of students, second reading. The core value is safe environment, provide a safe learning environment. Policy 580 is a new policy and proposes guidelines regarding district employees housing students in their private residences. If this policy is adopted, district employees working in their capacity as district employees would be required to obtain express permission before housing any students in his or her private residence. The proposed policy requires district employees to understand when they are acting in the capacity of a district employee or a private citizen. For second reading, the proposed policy has been revised for clarity based upon board member input during first reading and feedback from the work group. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve second reading, public hearing, adoption of policy 580, housing of students.
Second.
And we have a report from the administration?
Yeah, basically the same, you know, attempting to provide clarity and guidance for employees when they find themselves in a situation where they feel like they need to make this decision. Again, this is probably even more of an emergency than, than transportation. Transportation seems to be a more common type of question that we receive. This is truly unusual, but it does come up. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Ivory.
Thank you. So, I will walk you through this policy. Same work group worked on this policy, same duration, same meetings, so same structure in terms of the work group. And this is what we've produced for the second reading. The first paragraph, as Dr. Gaborik stated, this is rare, this is unusual, does, is not likely to happen. But the first paragraph talks about those non-emergency situations where an employee is seeking to have a student housed in their private residence. And so, the directive, the policy states that they will not do so without express permission from both the student's legal guardian and the superintendent. The rest of the policy refers to those emergency situations. And so, what we talked about as a work group is that if you have a student that appeared at your house, and it's 40 below outside, and there was an emergency, something was going on, what, what is expected of that employee? And so, that's what the rest of the policy lays out, and trying to free up that gray area and provide them some guidance and some directives. What we're asking employees to do before they allow the student to remain in their residence is to utilize all community resources, notify their supervisor of the emergency, and notify the student's legal guardian if the circumstances warrant that. We also took into account mandatory reporting requirements, and so, that's all outlined here in the policy. And it finalizes with the same final sentence as in the last policy, that district employees need to understand when they're acting in the capacity of a district employee versus that as a, of a community member.
Okay, I'll go to the public for any comments. Anybody wish to testify on this item? Keeping you active.
You are, thank you very much.
Sandy Ryan, Fairbanks. Thank you guys for looking at this and taking the time, especially with the new policy and the changes in the previous policy. Again, this is a work group that spent a lot of time looking at these instances. You know, what do you do when the kid that you have in your algebra class shows up on your doorstep at 2:00 in the morning, and they've been either asked to leave their home, or they felt like they needed to leave their home? You know, what do you do when the kid that you have in your algebra class shows up on your doorstep at 2:00 in the morning? And they've been either asked to leave their home or they felt like they needed to leave their home. So give us some guidelines on what to do. I totally agree. Some ARs maybe that will help, you know, clear what that's what we mean out of these might be in order. But there was a, a lot of work around what do we do in those very, very, very unusual emergency situations? And what do we do to make sure that if it isn't that emergency situation, that the kid just wants to spend the night at your house because your kid's there, but you don't really friends with the family, you know, what, what is the process that you should look at? You know, how are you taking care of everybody that's involved to make sure that parents aren't worried and to make sure that people are informed? And so that's the nature of the, of the, of the work that we did. We spent quite a while. It was a really thoughtful work group and it looks like we'll be spending some more time together from the other one. And, you know, we're planning vacations and things. It will be good. That, I just want to say that I support this because I know the work and the, the spirit behind it and it's needed. We need to know what to do when the kid shows up on our doorsteps.
Any questions, Ms. Lambert?
So I do have a question. So can you, in a, is there any job descriptions that would allow a district employee to house a student?
You could, as a, as a private citizen, you could be a foster parent. You could be asked as, as a, as a neighbor, you could be asked as a teacher from that parent that has an emergency. You really don't know what could happen. So you're, you, you work with the kid after school tutoring and the parent knows that. You're in, you're in your classroom doing so. And then an emergency comes and they have to go and take care of a parent someplace. They turn to you. What, what are you supposed to do? You know, what, what's your actions? We now have at least an idea of the process we should go through. Does that help?
Sort of, because you're talking about more in your private capacity.
Well, they came to me as a district employee because I don't know the parent at all, except for the communication with the child.
But you wouldn't be acting in your capacity as a district employee if somebody knocked on your door at 2:00 in the morning. You would at that point be helping a child in need and acting as a private citizen because it's not your job description to, to house a student, to become a shelter for a student under the authority of the district.
I think I understand what you mean, but my, my only contact with them is because I'm their classroom teacher. I really would feel like I needed to notify my supervisor and, and to make sure that there were some policies in place.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. Testify. Is there anybody else who really wishes to testify on this? Seeing none, welcome back to the board. Mr. Jerome?
The, the first thing that popped into my mind is that ever since I was, since I moved to Fairbanks as a very small child, I can't even remember. My next door neighbor, I was always told if there was something to go wrong and that I should go right to my next door neighbor's house. And that, that would be the safest place for me. And my next door neighbor is, i- is best friends with my mom. They have been for years. And her husband is a district employee. And if my, for some reason, my mama wasn't available and something were to go wrong, my sister and I, as students of the school district, would probably go right over to that next door neighbor's house. And at that point, you would have a district employee housing a student. And I can see, I mean, we have, what do we say? We have like 3,000 employees of the, of the district total. So there's, they're all over our communities. And so I, I raise the same concerns here about, I guess, you know, whether or not they, they would be acting as a private citizen, but they are also a district employee. And so started to play off of Ms. Lambert's comments, that, that is a scary margin to play. And I don't know whether these guidelines are clear enough to, to define whether or not if my sister and I as school district students, if we were to go over to our next door neighbor's house, who we've known our whole life, since before we were actually students of the school district, would be forcing them to, to violate a policy if they were to, to take us in. So that, that would be my, that was the first thing that jumped into my head.
Ms. Lambert?
I, I just think this is a really bad precedence to set. I, um. Again, it's the employee 24/7 type of thing. Is that where we're going? Or we, do we actually have a private hat versus a, an employee hat? And just like, you know, do I go to my neighbor's house even though I know that my neighbor is a district employee when I grew up around there? And does that neighbor allow me in because he's a district or she's a district employee? And, you know, and now they have all of the, all of this to do when that's, you know, that's obviously not the intent. So I think we have to define an employee. Again, are we an employee 24/7 or do we actually have separate hats? For one thing, and two, the liability concern for me too is just tremendous. I mean, if you are a district employee 24/7 and you have somebody come at your door and you, you, you're not acting in your, in your capacity. And we, as a district, has a policy that says you can house a student in need at any time, as long as you meet these requirements. We are now, as a district, liable for anything that might happen to that child. Whether there's a medical emergency and it's not taken care of and something happens, you know, 911's not called, they don't get there in time. We're, we're responsible for that. We are responsible for, God, God forbid, any type of misconduct that might occur. You know, or any allegation therein. Years later, we're, we're responsible. And I'm not sure if that is a place that we want to be. And that's, that's not our, that's not our mission as a school district. There are organizations that deal with this and deal with it well within the community and are funded to deal with this. We, we, we're not. And I understand that emergencies arise, but there are, there are places that will handle emergencies that we, as the district members, if we're 24/7, can get them to. Police, OCS, there's the door, there's the women's shelter, there's all sorts of, there's, there's different places that can, that, that is their charter to deal with this. It is not our charter to deal with this. I just think that this is a very bad policy in many, many respects. And I just, I, you know, if we have to have one, then we need to, again, have an AR that defines what is private, what is not private. And what, you know, just because you're a district employee doesn't mean that you, that this policy is going to apply to you in every, in every situation. And I think putting that responsibility on district employees to understand when they're acting within or not within, you know, this policy is, is a huge burden on them, just a huge burden. And I just, the liability for the district is, I, I don't think it's something that we should accept.
Ms. Anderson?
Well, I want to thank you for working on the policy and coming out of an A&amp;E classroom. I've had students that had to have emergency placement all the way around, emergency transportation all the way around. And none of it surrounding those students were easy. I had one student who, because of their situation at home, basically walked across the street to their neighbor. And the neighbor became, took that student in and housed that student. They weren't district employees. They were parents of students who were in the district. But they made a difference in the student's life, so I get what you're trying to do. I really do. And it's the time we're living in. Our, our schools are getting hit with all kinds of situation. We have trauma and on every level in it, from K through 12. And so we're being forced to look at, create a policy and, and put something in place. And I just want to make sure that it doesn't, you know, everyone is clear on it, how it needs to be done and the repercussions. How they're, you know, how they need to handle it. So people are very clear. You know, you can divide staff in some ways and say certified have the power to do this, but maybe they don't. Support staff have a different connection with students. And then in this case, maybe they don't. So we're just needing really clear guidelines. And maybe some historical something that some other school districts have done to handle this. Because the times we're living in are demanding that we reach out and do some different things. So I do appreciate what you're trying to do.
Okay, a couple of questions I had. And again, the intent, and I, and I know these situations come up. I know kids, students have shown up on other people's doorsteps. And, I mean, this is a reality. This has been said. I do have a little, few concerns about the policy as written and whether we can get to where we, our intent is. But in the second paragraph there, when we talk about an employee and the performance of his or her occupational duties, it's kind of along some of what Ms. Lambert has said, but, you know, when might this happen? Are we expanding the duties of an employee to include that possibility? And that's what the wording here raises a concern for me on. I don't believe we, we ever want to put an employee in the position of housing a student because of their, their job. I think we want to protect employees to give them basically a humane way of saying no. And really know where students are for safety, but, but that's there. And I really appreciate the rewrite of this and including those steps that one should follow, which is basically as mandated reporters, I mean, right in line with that. So I have that question that I don't think is clear here. The last sentence line of that second paragraph, the word allowing, did you have to take these steps prior to allowing the student to remain? You know, if a student does show up at 2:00 in the morning, 50 below, I know we have students who are camping out and might decide to go to somebody's house. Oh, I know the teacher lives nearby and they go, or the principal or whoever it might be. The, you're not going to put them outside, well, wait while I make all these phone calls, you know, so I, just a timing piece there. And I know it's not intentional, but just. The other two things as we go through, and number one, there are examples of law enforcement, of children's services. I don't know whether it's and that they'd have to, it's and or, or local. And I go back and forth on that. I mean, we used to have a program here and, and do locally here where they will take teens in. You know, make sure they have a place to stay and they've, have the coordination to the door and stuff. But I do have, you know, the, the person wouldn't have to call all of those. And typically, I know you go to OCS. If you can't get hold of them, then you would go to law enforcement and then they would actually help in working with the local organization, et cetera. And so, and number three, about not contacting the legal guardian. I like the clarification here and it makes good sense, but that it's not just reporting it to OCS. Because if it is in the middle of the night, it may be very hard to get hold of OCS or after hours. And the go-to is law enforcement. And then they would work that, whatever the process is. So I think that we would have to minimally on that, number three, add a law, law enforcement on that. And then that brings us back to the last sentence, which again adds a lot of ambiguity to that. What do we mean? I mean, very similar to our previous conversation. So those were my observations and questions. Came out of that. I don't know if you want, wanted to respond or just take it?
I was gonna add something in there. So I appreciate the comments. I'm, I'm sensing the need for some ARs as suggested by Ms. Lambert. And we've brought that up. In the work groups processing and, and in looking at our mandated reporting requirements, points one, two, and three are inclusive. And so if we haven't made that clear, we need, we need to go back and wordsmith that a little bit. We, in, in the event of an emergency, the district employee must take the following steps prior to allowing a student to remain. So appreciate your comment, Mr. Doran. Students there, it's the emergency situation, to use your example. It's 2:00 in the morning. You're right, we're not going to make them wait on the street before they do these things, so they step inside. But before allowing the student to stay, these steps have to happen. You do need to reach out and utilize your community resources. You do need to call law enforcement. We're mandated reporters as district employees. The Office of Children's Services is available in some capacity 24/7. And so whether we get a live body on the phone or we make that telephone call or that report, we need to show that we have done that. And we need to notify our supervisor. And in the day and age of technology, that could be a text message or an attempt at a phone call because we are attempting an emergency here. That, that's the exception, as you shared. And then notify the student's legal guardian unless we suspect that, that that's going to lead to harm in some manner. So it was, it was the work group's intent to, A, recognize these are very exceptional situations. They're emergency situations where the student who's in front of us has some sort of a nexus or connection to us as a district employee, whether it's 4:30 in the afternoon or 2:00 in the morning. It's not just a random young person knocking on the door. That, that relationship somehow exists already. And employees, yeah, that is the primary relationship. That is how they're on our doorstep or that is how they're seeking assistance. But I recognize the need for AR. And if we're going back to the table anyway, I think we could come up with some clearer, clear guidelines that we can embed in AR and, and give some examples, if that would be more helpful. I, I agree, there's been lots of time in here, but we, we feel strongly both are needed and so we do want to get it right. So thank you for recognizing that, that, that's the intention here, to help students, to help staff and, and take care of everyone involved so that there's no ambiguity. So we will do the work until we get it right.
Thank you. Ms. Lambert?
So, two things. Can you reiterate the reporting requirements for an employee who is not on duty? Is it 20, is, is it, you always have a, yeah, so he's not?
Always, yeah, as an educator, you always have that reporting obligation.
Okay, so even in a private capacity?
Yes.
They would have a reporting obligation?
Yes.
Okay, and that would be immediate, right? Or whatever the?
You're supposed to report as soon as you have the sense that there's something that needs to be reported. I mean, obviously, there has to be a reasonable opportunity to report something to, so.
So in, in that, knowing that, then there would never be a time where the, the district employee has to understand when they're acting in their private or their personal capacity. Because if a kid knocks at the door at 2:00 in the morning, they would regardless have a reporting requirement.
If that child was in harm from somebody that needed to be reported for, to Child Services. If that child, and, and if they had run away and they weren't, hadn't been harmed by anybody, they had put themselves in harm and that needed to at least be reported to the law enforcement and, and, yeah.
So there's a blurred line between what is private and what would be considered your?
A lot of this has to do with in what capacity does, does that student know you or you know the student? If the, if the relationship, if the knowledge of each other has been only through a school situation, then, and you don't have, you know, you don't have a knowledge of the student through family, friends and other activities where your families are getting together outside of school, not your niece or nephew. And they, they sought you out because they know that you're a friendly face from school. That's a big part of it, is the nexus of where the student knows you from.
So that nexus is a lot different than saying that the employee is in the performance of their occupational duties.
Correct.
That's, there's a distinction there. I could know you as a administrator, but I can come to you and, and you're not performing in the, in your occupational duties at the time that I come to you. So there's, that's confusing. Because there's a difference between being a district employee and knowing that somebody's a district employee and going to them because they're acting in the performance of their official duties. Because I don't think anybody's official duties in our district have that they may house a student in need at their private residence. I just, I can't imagine that we have some sort of job description that says that. So there's a distinction between I know you're a district employee and I trust you and I feel comfortable that nothing bad's going to happen versus I'm acting in the performance of my official duties. So, I, I mean, I think there's.
I think we're trying to make it clear that we're not housing the team from the other school when they visit. As I'm the coach and I'm housing the students at my house. house in my, in my role.
Right, well, but that's a different situation.
But that would be a situation where in my occupational duties, I would be housing, I might think that it would be appropriate to house students, and we need to make it clear that that's not acceptable.
Right. So, I mean, what I'm saying is that I, there's a distinction between, I know you're an employee, and I, and I'm, and I feel like I can, I'm comfortable going to your house, but you're still not acting in your official capacities when I come to your house. So, I mean, I?
I'm understanding the feedback. I think it's definitely something our work group can work, can work to improve and provide clarity, because I understand the feedback that you're providing, definitely.
Okay. Ms. Marotti?
It's the exact same thing. It's just specifically in the second paragraph where it states employee in the performance of his or her occupational duties, that the performance part would not be happening at 2:00 in the morning at that employee's house, I would assume. So exactly what Ms. Lambert said.
Correct, and as Ms. LaPont was saying, the true intent is if, if a child comes to your house because you, I know you as a principal, I know that you're my principal, and I'm coming to you for help, as my principal, that's different than my son who goes next door to the neighbor to ask for help for something. And what we're asking is the differentiate, to differentiate between the two, but I understand the feedback that you're giving, that occupational duties don't include housing of students. So, so wordsmithing that and providing that clarity would be helpful. So I'm understanding the feedback, definitely.
So if I'm hearing the board, there might be at least additional time needed to work on this and to clarify it, if that is, and somebody wants to make a motion to that effect, postpone?
Move to postpone, second reading, public hearing, adoption of policy 580, housing of students into a future meeting.
Second? Okay, Sanderson. Okay, so we have a motion to postpone to a future meeting. Is there any public comment on that motion? Seeing none, I'll come back to the board. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none. Sharon, would you call the vote on that?
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Colonel Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, again, to the administration and the working group, thank you very much for, I mean, it's an important thing, and this has a lot of aspects of, for staff, for students, keeping students safe, keeping staff safe, and protecting the district as well as a whole. So thank you, I know it's a complicated thing, and appreciate you keeping, working on it. Okay. So that brings us to Action Items New Business, Resolution 2019-16, Support for the Adoption of the National School Library Standards. Our core value is student-centered, that we center everything we do on the student and student learning. School Board Resolution 2019-16 encourages the state of Alaska to adopt the National School Library Standards to ensure all students receive instruction and critical library skills taught in context and integrated within their school experience. If approved, the resolution will be provided to the Alaska State Board of Education, the Alaska Association of School Librarians, and the Alaska Library Association. Any report from the administration?
Wait.
Oh, motion first.
Go ahead.
Move to approve Resolution 2019-16, Support for the Adoption of the National School Library Standards.
Second.
Okay, anything from the administration?
No, we just thank Ms. Rineo for bringing this to the attention of the school district and then teaching and learning. I think multiple people were involved in this, but Kathleen is back there, and I know is definitely a big supporter and supporter of librarians, so I'm sure she had a hand in working on this, and so we're, the administration's very happy to support this effort.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Flip a coin.
My name's Deborah Tice. I'm from North Pole. And my time starts now. I am the librarian at North Pole Middle School, and I was super excited to hear that you are considering the proposed resolution regarding your support of the adoption of the National School Library Standards that were recently released. I want to thank everybody who worked on this resolution, including Deborah Rineo and those on the district admin team, specifically Kathleen and Melanie, who supported the effort. The adoption of these standards is one step in assuring that all students in our district have opportunities to develop competencies based on the shared foundations that the standards support, such as inquiry, inclusion, collaboration, curation, exploration, and engagement. These standards are much more reflective of the work that happens each day in your libraries, so much more than the outdated standards from 1999. It is with enthusiasm and a zeal for this pursuit of the goals of future-ready schools and preparing future-ready students that I encourage you to pass that resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Tice? Seeing none, thank you very much for your testimony. Anyone else wish to testify on this item?
My name is Deborah Rineo. I live in Fairbanks. And first of all, thank you for considering this resolution, and I, of course, support it and hope you will too. And I think the main thing to keep in mind here is that our current standards are from 1999. I don't know about you, but I've noticed a few things have changed in the last 20 years. Our society has moved from people being just consumers of information to being creators of information, producers of information, and collaborators with others to share information. And it's important that our students understand those skills, utilize those skills. Our National School Library Standards make that possible through the six shared foundations that Ms. Tice mentioned a moment ago. Inquire, Include, Collaborate, Curate, Explore, and Engage, and they really are reflective of the work that is already being done in our schools, the work that our students need to continue to do to be part of this global economy. And these standards are intended to be integrated throughout the curriculum, they are process skills, they are the kind of things you do no matter what discipline you're engaged in, because you are always inquiring, you are always using information, you are always reading and thinking and putting things together and sharing them and collaborating with others. So no matter whether you're in math or science or social studies, these skills are necessary, and it's important that we have standards that reflect that, as opposed to outdated standards that few people can actually even find on the website nowadays. Also, I was on the, full disclosure, I was on the committee that helped to write those standards, so I'm a little biased, but it also means I know a lot about them, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. So thank you for considering this, and I hope you will support it.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for your testimony. Anyone else wish to come forward?
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Thomas, and I too live in North Pole area, and I also work at North Pole Middle School and the library. And I just want to say to the entire school board, thank you so much for considering Resolution As a library staff member, I want to say that I do support the new National School Library Standards, the current state library standards, as Ms. Rineo just stated, were adopted in 1999. So it's time for our library standards to be updated. And the new National Library Standards encourage students to explore and collaborate and engage, which means library staff members can help our students to be innovators, creators, problem solvers, and thinkers. And these are critical skills which are, are, these are, which are critical 21st century skills that every student needs. They need to be critical thinkers and innovators and creators and be able to solve worldwide problems that we are facing today, very, very serious problems, unfortunately. So I encourage the school board to please support Resolution 2019-16, and thank you so much for giving me the time to testify before you this evening.
Thank you. Before you go, let me just check, any questions from the board?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me get up.
Okay. Seeing none, but before you do go, just want to say congratulations on the state library recognition you received last year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wish to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, welcome back to the board for questions, comments, discussion?
Should we read?
Ms. Lambert? Read it first? Okay, sounds good. Yep. Okay, I'm not seeing any questions or comments anyway, so we should read it, and before we take a vote, would somebody like to read it? Okay. Mr. Jerome?
Whereas library information standards are a component of the Alaska Department of Education's content and performance standards, and whereas the library information standards were last reviewed and adopt, and approved by the Alaska State Board of Education in 1999, and whereas the American Association of School Librarians released updated National School Library Standards for learners, school librarians, and school libraries in November 2017, thereby providing a framework upon which students develop competencies based on the shared foundations of inquire, include, collaborate, curate, explore, and engage, aligning with content and technology standards across grade levels, and supporting a high standard for the school librarian profession and the school library program, and whereas the Fairbanks North Star Borough School, excuse me, whereas the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education supports school libraries and affirms standards based on library instruction advances student learning across content areas and grade levels. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education recognizes the National School Library Standards are integral to students' personal and academic achievement, and supports the adoption of updated National School Library Standards by the Alaska State Board of Education.
Any other comments, questions, discussion from the board? Okay, seeing none, I do just want to comment that I appreciated getting this link several months ago, and I did have a chance to look at these standards, and I thought they were a great complement to what we're trying to achieve for kids. So thank you for bringing it forward. Okay, seeing nothing from the board, would you call the vote, please?
Colonel Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Colonel Bondurant?
Yes.
Mrs. Lambert?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Actually, every time I look up at the clock, I keep thinking the clock stopped. It's an hour earlier than we normally get. So we're up to board in superintendent comments and committee reports. Our goal here is effective communication, establish relevant, inclusive, and consistent two-way communication to enable and encourage student, parent, staff, and community connectedness with the district, and increase the diversity of voices within the district. And that being said, we start with Colonel Fisher?
No comments this evening, thank you.
Colonel Bondurant?
I have nothing further, thanks, Tim.
Okay. Ms. Lambert?
Briefly, just the policy review committee has a meeting on February 27th, that's a Wednesday, from 6th to 7th on the fourth floor of the district building. So just for those members out there, and anybody else who would like to attend, that's when our first meeting of the year will be. I had a chance to see Newsies at Lathrop, and wow, 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 wow. It was just a phenomenal performance. It was a Broadway performance in Fairbanks. It was that good. It was much more than just a high school performance or a high school production. It was truly amazing, and congratulations to everyone who had anything to do with that, and all the, all the kids who participated, because it was really, really something to see. And just for the comments tonight, I don't mean to be a naysayer, or to be the, you know, the rut that stops everything from going. I really think that, I mean, I think we just need some more guidance on the policy, and if somebody showed up at my door at 2:00 in the morning, there's no way that I would turn them away without doing everything I could possibly do to find a place for them. So it's not, that, that's not what this is about. And I know that everybody in our district is the same way, and will do anything they can, and bend over backwards to help any student who's in need for any reason. So I just want to make sure that everybody is protected when we have these types of policies, and that's why, you know, I was throwing up some hurdles tonight. But I, but again, you know, that's, that's not the intent. I know what the intent is, and I know everybody here has, has big hearts, and all's they want to do is help kids, but I just want to make sure we're doing it right.
Ms. Marotti?
I promise I don't have any more questions. I just wanted to thank Crawford Elementary for their beautiful choir, that was, they gave me goosebumps, it was so good. I want to thank the staff and the budget committee and everybody, everybody that worked on the budget, the proposed budget. You guys have done a great job, and we're excited to read all 377 pages of it.
Right.
And the word. I, I got to, oh, back to the budget committee, next meeting is February 27th, be there, be square, if you want to. And I got to judge the academic decathlon, the regional academic decathlon this year, and it was the highlight of my year. Those kids are amazing, and congrats to all the high schools that participated, and they are all going to state later this month, so that was definitely a highlight. And I just thank everybody for listening in, attending, and the board for all your hard work.
Ms. Anderson?
I'd like to thank everybody for their participation for tonight's meeting and the presentation of the budget. I got a really, really neat opportunity to go to Crawford Elementary to observe their Black History Wax Museum. It was a fine presentation, the students were on point, they were in costume, in character, and I actually learned a few things that I didn't know. So I appreciate their presentation and all the hard work that those students did to present that, to bring it forward. Also, I got an opportunity to go Lathrop, I actually spent two days visiting Lathrop, but my second day, I got a chance, my first day I did the innovations, and so I'd spend a lot of time talking actually to students, and just getting their take on why that, that piece of their school is working for them, instead of them being a part of the regular. And a lot of those students expressed that it allowed them to really come out of, out of their classrooms and really stay focused. Some students who wouldn't be able to play sports, eligible to play sports, were able to really focus on their work, bringing their grades up. Students felt that they could pace themselves at their own pace, and one student talked about the AP courses and how he's able to be on track to courses that he wants, things he's interested in. And talking with the staff that's helping provide that support to those students, I heard from them that it's costly, but it's working, it's not a fit for all of our students in the district, but those students that are willing to engage and try it, that they are really, the numbers are up. The first year they graduated 12 students that were not on track to graduate, one being an Alaska native student who was the first in his family to graduate. He was working at such a capacity, he had not realized that he had already achieved his goal and had actually gotten beyond the credits that he needed. So that was awesome to hear. And just in Anchorage, I think this whole month, it's Black History Month, they're doing trailblazers, and part of that is to feature African-American contributions in the state of Alaska, in the history of Alaska, and featured, of course, is Ms. Betty Davis, which we just lost her, a friend of education, an avid supporter, and a fierce competitor, fierce when you came into her presence, if you weren't fully funding and talking about something that helped and advanced. talking about something that helped and advanced students in their situation. So thank you.
Mr. Jerome?
Feeling a little talkative today. Just asked Mr. Shannon at Hutchinson High School. Just have a couple of things that I do want to bring to the board and the public's attention. The first one was I just want to give, I really hope they're still listening, but Mr. Pitney and Mrs. Wool for the peaceful discord they had about the gun safety ideas. And Mr. Pitney said it himself that she might, that he might disagree with Mrs. Wool on the other aspects of gun control measures and gun safety, but they were both able to be up there and give their opinions in a very calm, peaceful way. And I think that that was a perfect example for students and adults alike on how we can do stuff like that. The second thing is heavier, for sure, and I want to bring attention to the fact that there is not enough that we can do to prevent teen e-cigarette use, I'm going to call it vaping, because that's what the vernacular is amongst my age group. And I think that that starts with parent awareness, and this is, you know, this is something that the whole community has, the whole community needs to focus on, and that starts with parent awareness. So for any parents listening, you know, please do some research on the effects of teen nicotine use and all it does for teen brains, and the possibility for other things like chemical burns and wet lung. And specifically, look up a company called Juul Labs. That's probably the most commonly used product on the market. It's J-U-U-L, and that's just parents and stakeholders in our community, teachers, support staff, nurses. I think everybody needs to be familiar with what these companies' motives are, and that's really important to me because I see it as an epidemic. And in fact, I have a New York Times article pulled up on my laptop right now, and this is the big quote I want to bring attention to. The percentage of seniors who said they had vaped within the past 30 days, an indication of more frequent use, just about double, rising to 21% in 2018 from 11% in 2017. That's one-fifth of high school seniors reporting that they had some form of continued use. So that's alarming to me, and I think that there's not enough that, as a community, we can do to stop that because we don't know the implications yet. And then my last thing to try to bring it back to a more positive note is I saw a really inspiring thing on Twitter this past week, and it was what, there's a third grade class asked to write comments about what they wish their teacher knew, so I wanted to share a couple of them. This third grader said, and this isn't from our district, this is from a different school district, but I just wanted to share it. She works hard, she loves us, she don't quit. I wish my teacher knew that I try my hardest, but some things I don't understand. I wish my teacher knew that we don't want you to leave. I wish my teacher knew that I only fall asleep, I only fall asleep when I'm not able to go to sleep at night. And then my favorite one, I wish my teacher knew how smart some of the bad kids are. And I really just think that that goes to show a universal appreciation that we have. Those were third grade students, but all the way up through juniors and seniors in high school, we really do appreciate our teachers and everything that they do for us. So just wanted to end on that note, and yeah, have a great couple of weeks, everybody. Thanks.
Dr. Mark?
I just want to thank Alden for his insightful comments all the time. Yeah, I really appreciate your contributions, and especially that you engage during policy discussions and bring your perspective. So I have no other announcements, so thank you.
I have just a couple here. Again, want to recognize the Crawford Singers and Caribou Chorus for what a wonderful job they did and really started our meeting off on such a wonderful note, literally, and under the direction of Ms. Lawrence. As noted, this is Black History Month. It's been really nice going into some of the schools, and you see some of the displays up and the studies that students are doing. And there is a Black History Month contest underway. There's information on this on the district website. Submissions are due next Tuesday, February 12th, so we just want to get word out on that. And also to recognize the Daily News Minor also has information, has done a display of information of Black contributors to jazz music in this particular one, but that community effort is really good. Want to encourage the public to bring testimony forward regarding an input to us, whether you come and talk in person or send it to us regarding the budget, and also these important topics like gun safety and the other issues that are of concern to our community. And it's really important for us to hear from people, and we appreciate when you're taking the time to come down and speak with us. Newsies, yes, was a wonderful, wonderful production, and I couldn't help but go through it and say, okay, what are these academic standards that they are just showcasing, literally? And I was thinking, we don't really test very often the oral standards in language arts, and there they were completely on display, as well as, you know, it was really steam and lots of arts and energy and the planning that goes into doing the design of the set and making sure people don't run into each other. I mean, I had a ball just enjoying the show and the New York accents that they threw in. It brought me back to my boyhood days as a newsboy in New York. As noted, we are going down, Ms. Dominique, Ms. Marotti, and myself, this weekend as part of the State School Boards Association fly-in to meet with our legislators. And of course, certainly, the governor's suggestion that he reclaim $20 million from our budgets this year will be high on our list, but also looking forward to next year because we need the support. And we've had a promise from our legislators last year to bring it forward, and we're trusting on that promise to make sure that happens. And finally, I'd like to thank KUAC, who facilitates coverage, radio coverage of our meetings starting at 6 o'clock. They do make a change in channel at 7. That's why we make that mid-meeting announcement, but their partnership to really make sure that we have full coverage from the beginning of the meeting to the end. Okay, and unless I see anything else from the board, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, we have a second. We're adjourned. Okay, thank you very much.